Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining, and we will start. I think we're all here, so we can move on to oral communications. Thank you. And then minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm in favor. Are we voting?
There's no voting here.
Oh, it's not working. Okay. Got it. Aye. Thank you.
Approved by the board.
We can move on to item number two, update on the temporary relocation of the Escondido City Library.
No, I don't need anything. Now, if I was smart, I would have provided a small presentation for you all. But we were busy preparing for the presentation that we're going to be giving to the city council next week. So initially, we were going to be giving it this week. We were still in negotiations with the mall, and therefore, we just finalized those details today, and so we are going to be going to council next week. So let me give you just a really quick rundown of what we're going to be doing when we go to council. So we are going to be going to council on April 16th, which is Wednesday of next week, and we're going to be asking them a series of questions. The first question is to approve a budget adjustment through a resolution to approve $828,000 for us to be able to move the library. So that's the first question we're going to be asking. Then the next one is, as you may recall, we also did an RFP for the professional moving services. We have received all those bids back last week, and we found an amazing deal, just under $30,000, which is a far cry from what we thought it was going to be, which is amazing, and that's a round trip, by the way. That's not just a one-way. That is the round trip. So I thought it was incredible, but thankfully, because of the LSNS staff, Reno and his team, and what we've done as far as pre-planning is concerned, we were able to really be able to narrow the scope of what they would actually be doing. And for the most part, it's just simply transporting the collections and some of the furniture back and forth. And so that's why we're able to really narrow the scope of the project. So that's the second thing we're going to be asking them, is to approve the execution of an agreement with the moving company for us to be able to move forward, so we can do that. The third thing that we are asking is also a resolution to -- I'm sorry, I completely forgot. It's in my head, but -- to do something. Let's see. Oh, it's a -- also have to approve the budget adjustment, so it's not just the -- oh, excuse me, the tenancy agreement. So it's the tenancy agreement is the last thing. So as far as the tenancy agreement is concerned, what we are looking at doing is we will have a one-year agreement with them, and then after that point, we are going to go month to month. So everything that we are asking for of the city council, we have based it on one year plus a three-month contingency as a just-in-case. So that's kind of what we're looking at. The presentation next week is going to be a combination of several different staff members who've had a number of different hands kind of in this pot, kind of moving back and forth with this. So Reno will be present to answer any questions they have of the library. Our project manager, Ed, who's been up here many times, will also be present to provide a portion of the presentation. Francisco will be providing a portion of the presentation. I will be providing a portion of the presentation. So it's pretty substantial. We are currently still on track as to what all the closures are going to be, and then also the bids. So our construction bids are expected to close at 2:00 PM on Thursday of next week, so April 17th is when the construction bids will close. We will open those, and we will move forward with doing the selection process that was outlined in the RFP, in the bidding process, and then that will go to council on May 14th, I believe it is. Let me just double-check here. Yes, the award of the bid contract will go on May 14th. So again, we're still headed towards the final day of operation in the current location on April 28th -- 6th? April 26th, thank you. I have so many numbers in my head. Please forgive me. So the closure of the final day will be the 26th, and then we will be closed for approximately one-month period of time. That first week of that closure, LSNS staff will be preparing for the move. That second week of the closure, that's when the professional services, moving services, will come in and actually move everything during that period of time. Right now, they're anticipating the move to only take anywhere from two to three days, so it's a very compact, but we want to give them that full-week period of time to be able to do those -- that move. And then the two weeks preceding that will have the LSNS staff be able to prepare for opening. Again, I know there was a concern about the length of the closure. We will work as quickly as we possibly can to open as soon as we can, but again, that's going to be up to whether or not we can have all of those things in place. One of the critical elements of that, of course, is our technology infrastructure, and we are working with our inter -- with our information systems department to be able to move that forward. So there's a lot of moving parts here. It is entirely possible, and I do want you to know this, that we may need to operate and move forward in a phased approach. And so that may mean that not all of our technology is in place at that time, so that would mean that we would look at those critical things that we would need to start with first before we moved with some of those other items. We'll be working with Reno and his team to determine what those critical pieces are first that we would need to move forward with. So that's kind of the general update that I have at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Robert, I'm updating this sheet again, and last meeting, I believe you were going to try to get us a new version of this.
Did we send it over? I thought we'd sent it over. I sent -- passed on to Reno, and as I recall, I thought I saw him send it to the board, because he usually CCs me on those items. I apologize if you have not received it, though.
Yeah, it'd be useful, because I'm running out of room if I keep changing dates. Okay, so you're moving the contract approval for city out to the 14th, but the move dates for the library is remaining the same. That's what I'm seeing. Is that right?
So the -- so May 14th is the date that we are going to -- the approval of the --
Okay. It says here the set -- last -- this one says the 7th, so now that's been moved to the 14th.
Then there was a change from what you have to what the current one is. That's correct.
Right. But my right -- my notes from last meeting says that the relocation starts the 26th of April and ends the 27th of May.
That's correct.
Okay, so that hasn't changed.
No, that has not changed. The actual construction, we're anticipating to begin the first week of June. So the actual construction will start that first week of June in the main library. And by that time, we will have completely vacated that space, and the temporary library will be open at the mall.
Okay. I had a question from an acquaintance from elsewhere in the city. He's on the community foundation, and he wanted to know why we were closing the library before we awarded the contract. And I said, "I'll verify this," but I'm pretty sure the reason is because we're trying to do as many things in parallel as possible.
You are accurate with that assessment.
Okay.
And considering it takes us an entire month, if we were to wait until the award of the contract, which would be May 14th, we would not actually be moved into our new location till June 14th. That would be beyond what we are considering the start of construction, which would be around the 1st of June.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
I just double-checked. We did get updated timeline on March 21st, so I just forwarded it to you.
Thank you. Didn't know I had it.
Can you just walk me through what could potentially change during the city council meeting?
Nothing, I hope.
Okay.
So it -- we have prepared a relatively thorough report for the city council to be able to go through, the step-by-step process of where we were, and starting as far back as when the grant was awarded to us, to where we are now and where we're headed. We've also added a couple of slides in that presentation that -- so that they understand there will be a couple more items that will coming before them that are related to the library as well. We don't anticipate any problems or any challenges. We've met with the city manager earlier this week, and based on the feedback that was provided to us, we're making some minor tweaks to that particular presentation. But we don't anticipate any changes whatsoever.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Thanks.
Item number three, building for library infrastructure grant project. You again.
Oh, that's wild. That's me again. Okay. Well, instead of giving you the update which I just gave you, can I -- I'd like to give you an important city update, and I think this is important because it's relevant to you as far as that's concerned. A few weeks ago, we were notified by the state of California that anybody who does murals on city buildings is required to have a contract, a painting contractor's license. As you understand and know, we do have the Kumiai creation story for that mural that is supposed to be going on the library, and we were diligently working with the artist and with the Escondido Community Foundation to be able to get that on the building prior to the start of construction. We have been working with the state to kind of figure out the details about that, what they are very set, in that the law specifically states that if you're painting on a building, you do have to have a painter contract -- paint contractor's license. Unfortunately, that is generally -- no, I wouldn't say unattainable, but it's not realistic for our artists or muralists to have that. And the reason why is that you have to go through basically four years of an apprenticeship under a licensed contractor. You have to take a business and law examination administered by the state, and then you also have to pay your annual licensing fees. There is currently a bill that is working its way through the state legislature to provide a narrow exception for muralists, to allow them to not be required to have this particular license. That bill was heard in committee for -- in the Business Professionals and Economic Development Subcommittee in the Senate on Monday. It did pass unanimously, and it's been moved to the appropriations committee, and that is scheduled for the 21st of April. If it's successful in that committee, then it moves over to the assembly to have them go through their process as well. And again, providing a very narrow focus, an exemption for muralists. The other exemptions that are actually in the law currently are if the project is $500 or less, that's an exemption. If it is a student project, student-led project, it is also exempt. The other thing that would provide an exemption would be obviously if the muralist themselves had the license, that's just compliance with the law, or if, and we've had this happen once before, our mural on Palomar College, an artist created that, and then they paid a contractor to come in to actually paint the building. So that would be what would be considered in compliance with the law as well. Until this time, because there are fines that are associated with an artist painting without a contractor's license, there are also associated fines to any officials that knowingly approve and/or allow that to occur. So the city was assessing that risk. We're not willing to take that risk on at this time, and therefore, we are pausing all mural projects in the city. I've already had a conversation yesterday with the Escondido Community Foundation, and I've given them the criteria for to be able to move forward, so should they so choose to do so, in an appropriate manner that's available for them, although we are really hopeful, because right now, there is no official opposition to this bill, which is SB 460 -- 456, if you're interested. So it's SB 456, if that's something that you want to look up going forward. And I can also tell you, as a part of that, the city of Escondido lent its support to this bill. The mayor officially sent a letter of support last week to Senator Ashby, who is the sponsor of the bill. And then the city of Escondido was actually listed as a supporter of that particular bill when it did come up in the hearing. And our lobbyists that we have in Sacramento actually spoke on our behalf at that hearing, so it was really nice to hear that. So they are going to continue to let us know as we kind of move forward throughout this process. Unfortunately, we will not be able to continue with our murals until such time we find an adequate alternative way to be able to implement them, or the law has changed so that we can start doing that again. So that's what we're working with.
And you said that's all city-owned property?
Technically, it is any property.
Any property, yeah.
Yeah, it is any property, but the city is held generally to a higher standard, and so, you know, we're the ones that get sued, get fined when something like that occurs.
Got it. Thank you.
Technically, everybody should have a licensed contractor, according to the state of California, if you want to paint on your house, but we all know that, you know, it doesn't necessarily happen.
You may not be able to answer this, but do you recall if the foundation had a deadline for when that money needed to be spent? Like, depending on how long this resolution goes through, the process, would we be in a situation where that mural wouldn't be able to happen anymore?
I don't have the answer to your question on that one. I do know that immediately after the phone call or meeting that we had, they will be talking to their spot committee and their board about how to approach this particular situation. So at least I was able to give them some good news. One of their items that they're working with us on, which is a sculpture, will be going in Kit Carson Park, at least that's moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay. To maybe answer your question, I am part of the foundation, and I know the lady that runs the mural program. I'm really confident that they can have -- get their funding, it's their money, get it delayed as long as they want it to be delayed.
Got it. Okay.
We did also provide them with the contact information for that one example I gave you that was done on Palomar College, so that's something that they're potentially, I'm assuming they're looking into. Thank you.
And we are moving on to item number four, which is authorization to use library trust funds.
That's correct. So attached to tonight's presentation, I included my staff report outlining the background, which you -- all of you should be familiar with. We have discussed the possibility of FFNE, the furniture fixtures and equipment that are outside of the scope of the infrastructure grant. At this point, we finally have a quote from GM, the vendor we are working with, to both design and select the furniture and to make sure we get prices are within the contract, the cooperative purchase. So at this time, we are recommending, both the library and the city, that Board of Trustees approve a use of $260,000 to purchase the FFNE for the first floor only at this time. I included the quote from GM, so you can get an idea of the types of furniture and the quantities. At the time of writing this agenda, I did not have the floor plan that's been updated. I do have it now, so I can share that after the meeting with you. But essentially, all these are going into the -- either the new areas we've created, such as the teen space, the quiet study space, the study rooms, and then, of course, that open floor space where we're going to have what we're calling the co-working space. That's the bulk of the furniture here that we're asking for, in addition to replacements for the computer area and seats there, and a limited amount of staff furniture. That's a result of moving the staff out of what has become or will become the teen space in particular. Now, of course, there's still plenty of unfunded items beyond this, but this is the first one where we can officially show to you the board and have your comment and thoughts about what is being selected. I've been involved with GM from the beginning, and so I've worked with their designers to select the finishes and to make sure that it matches with the planned carpeting in particular that's going on in the first floor that's being provided through the bid process, and then also to make sure it matches the new stacks that we'll be getting, so that everything is cohesive and doesn't look like it's being bought from a whole bunch of different vendors.
Reno, we've had a couple workshop meetings and included other foundations, and we owe them the list of unfunded items, and I was waiting for that to circulate to the other foundations. I would prefer that we hold off on approving this item tonight and provide the complete list to the other foundations to give them the choice and to choose what they would like to fund, and then use the trust fund to fund whatever's left over.
All right. One thing I'll mention, and I think that's a reasonable approach, we likely won't have a full list until after the bids come in, which will be in, I think, in a month or so. Until then, we won't know a lot of the bid alternate items that are being placed, and those are those unfunded items. So if we want to wait, that is an option.
And is there a reason why that you put this on the agenda for today? Is there a timing issue with the furniture?
There is some component to that. Right now, they're still seeing some of the vendors kind of not changing too much of the cost due to the tariffs. We would recommend -- we do have a healthy contingency. It's $40,000 out of the $200,000-plus, but a lot of this furniture is not manufactured here in the States. Most of it is coming out of China. If the 100-plus percent tariff stays in place, longer term, we are concerned that what would have cost us $200,000 will suddenly cost more, and not a small amount more. So there is some timing. Granted, it is part of a cooperative purchase agreement, so there are some prices that are fixed, but that can only go so far. But I do understand the sentiment about wanting to have our other foundations and partners have a full scope. Just be aware that that will push back some decisions. I may raise the cost for some of these items.
How long is your quote good for?
Ooh, hmm. That's a very good question, that I do not have the answer to right now.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you could ask them and get back to us, because if it's, you know, 60 days, that might give us time.
Were there any questions about any specific items or any rationale or anything?
I was just -- oh, sorry. Should have looked, am I right? I was just curious about what happens with all the existing furniture and other items. Where does that go?
A lot of this furniture will be brand-new because there wasn't a space for it before. So the bulk of it, which is going in what is described as the co-working space, that's new because it's not really replacing anything. That's an entirely new area, same with the teen space. The furniture that would be replaced would be things like, there's some lounge chairs that are near the reading area in the north side, which are probably at the end of their lifespan, and then other things like staff desks. Again, a lot of those are older than they should be, so most of it will be deaccessioned, so go through the process with the city, because again, it's all owned by the city. And so they have a process that Robert could explain maybe a little bit more to me, but I understand that it usually goes through procurement, and then they auction it off or donate it, or in bad cases, sell it or toss it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add on that Virginia's worked for about a year and a half now to try to get the three main sources that support the library. It's ourselves and friends and foundation working together so that we can offer the best possible support, cohesive support for the library. And I share her concern that us going off on our own and approving something without involving them is counterproductive to everything she's been working on.
And I think we had said we were going to have another community meeting, and so would it be possible to, once we have more details on the needs of, right, when the bids come in, to be able to send this list to them and then have a meeting so that, you know, when they come to that community meeting, they already had a chance to review this? Because I think we do owe them one more to chat.
I agree with that approach, and I was waiting for the list and the guidelines on the timing on when you guys thought we would have the most information for them, and I do like the approach of sending the information ahead of time, even if it's, you know, a general guesstimate, and that way, they have an idea of what items that they would like to fund, because they are eager to assist if possible. So Reno, I'll look to you and maybe Robert and Ed to give us dates, and maybe we could plan that out.
Got it. I think we'll reach out to Ed in particular.
Okay.
Because a lot of it is dependent on what comes back from the bids and those bid alternate items he's explained to me. It's like, for example, the carpet on the second floor, that's a bid alternate. The cost for the stacks, that's alternate. So once we have those, we'll have a clearer picture, and we'll definitely be able to give you concrete numbers for the items that aren't FFNE, because I know those in ballpark terms, but I do not know the construction-related costs.
Okay.
And just to add on to what Carolyn said earlier, I had the -- I wouldn't call it the pleasure, the challenging task of buying furniture for all PSA's 20-some-odd stations as well as headquarters, and it's -- it at times was painful. But asking the supplier or suppliers for a fixed time for which their prices are good is -- and having that as part of their bid is, for me, was pretty standard, and we -- especially in the times we have now, we ought to try to do that.
I also wanted to add, in trying to keep that relationship with the friends and everybody else involved, in the last community meeting, there were also concerns. So we -- I think we've expressed that they will have a space on the first floor, the friends of the library in particular, and so they had questions about, you know, furnishing their own space. So I know we're going -- some stuff is going to be discontinued because it's at the end of the life, and recognizing that we have to go through the city process, but I believe Robert had mentioned about trying to work out something where we can assist the friends kind of -- they help us and we help them, so that, right, those costs don't kind of go into what they could potentially help us furnish. That's going to be outside of the grant. So my request, an additional, and I know I'm asking a lot, Reno, is in that community meeting, if we could also have maybe like a map of the areas, because I know that that may have changed, to kind of explain like why we need certain lounging areas in certain areas of the library or desks, et cetera. And this, that's one may not be possible, but maybe a general idea of like what will be going to procurement, right, that maybe that they can try to say, like, "We have a need for, you know, these bookshelves," or the seating that is still not quite ready to be, you know, thrown out, just so that we can also come to the table and offer them something. And again, this may involve Robert, right, because of the process that it has to go through with the city.
Are we all in agreement to hold off on this vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Reno.
Got it. As part of this, I'll just do my update on the trust fund, by the way.
Okay.
I didn't, I did have that one on the packet. There's no real changes, just so you're aware. It does reflect the donation, so that's why the beginning fund balance is seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So that includes that two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar donation. We've had, of course, continued dividends and investment earnings. Hopefully, with the stock market going up and down, this is still decent. Again, this is quarterly, so this is through the end of March thirty-first. And yeah, at this point, we have six hundred and nineteen thousand in balance available to us. That does not include, of course, the various budgets that are listed above that. And so these are items that have been approved either by this board or past boards and are now in the city's hands, can be approved by Robert or a city representative. And likely, the next one we'll be using will be for our literacy luncheon, our annual learner recognition, which we still have eight thousand dollars for. Of course, I'll be sending out an email to the board in the coming days inviting you all to attend, again, our literacy appreciation dinner, or luncheon, I should say. I know Virginia and Carolyn were there last year. Everybody's welcome to join if you can. It's a very nice event where we, in particular, get to hear more of the human side of how literacy impacts the learners in particular, but also the tutors, who spend a lot of their time working one-on-one with our learning teams in literacy. And it's also something to keep in mind that we'll be losing some grant funding for literacy at the end of the next fiscal year in twenty-six. So not this year, but the next funding cycle, twenty-six, twenty-seven, is the last of the ESL literacy grant, which is currently our biggest grant source for literacy. We are looking to see for alternative funding sources, both from the state and beyond. But right now, it's not a really good time to be planning ahead for grants, since a lot of the federal grants are currently either frozen or stopped. But as you attend, if you attend, the literacy luncheon, just be reminded that it's almost all entirely funded through grants. And so we are aware of that and the vulnerability that presents. Keep in mind also that literacy program has been running here in Escondido for thirty-plus years. So there is a continuity in some grants we do expect will continue. It's just, we had an infusion of ESL funding from the state that would run for five years. We're now at the end of that five-year plan. And so we might see some need for extra funding from somewhere. It's still too early for me to say whether we will be able to get it externally or we will have to ask for support from the board or from the city. But just so you're aware, that literacy has a very big grant component to it.
Are those grants all coming from the state of California?
Most of them, yes.
And do they come then from the federal government, or is it all state-owned?
It's all very interconnected.
Yeah.
So in general, a lot of our state, and the state of California does offer a lot of grants provided through the state library. The issue becomes that, and well, actually, we're skipping ahead to my director's report, so we'll save some time there. The problem is that a lot of positions that manage the state grants are paid for by federal grants. So if the, there aren't people to manage or award the grants, then they can't offer the grants. And so we have a catch-twenty-two type situation where there might be funds appropriated by the governor in the budget session, but then there's nobody in the library ecosystem to actually manage and distribute those funds. And so there's really a hard, we're kind of in a tough situation at that point. Right now, for example, we, library directors and our regional partnerships that were part of the SARA cooperative, those cooperatives throughout the state, we're meeting in our next session. We'll be discussing how we can try to absorb some of those costs or take on some of those responsibilities. But there are some things we won't be able to take on or that are beyond the scope of what we can do locally, even as a cooperative. For example, California's invested a lot in eBooks and e-audiobooks for the California Bookshelf, as they call it. We've been relying on that as a secondary backup for when people can't find their materials on Hoopla or Overdrive. In the Palace app, that is the one that's connected to the California Bookshelf, which was completely funded by federal grants. So while we've purchased items, or the state has purchased items, they'll have a license for, say, a year or two, depending on the item. Once those licenses are up, and if there's no grant funds to replenish, then that service will go away. Palace app will remain, but there won't be as many materials provided by the state. So again, it's a lot of interconnected parts when it comes to the funding sources that help run our library and all our neighboring libraries, both here and throughout the state. Any other questions about, say, the trust fund?
Thank you for that breakdown.
This one may, if not, let me know, maybe I should move this to the director's report. But regarding grants, have you identified if there are any grants we would not be able to fulfill the goals or objectives during this move, recognizing that there's going to be limited in-person programming at the new location?
Great question. Thankfully, we only have one active grant that could have been impacted, which was the Play for All grant. But that one's term ends in May. And so it won't be impacted, as we'll be able to continue our storytimes in the Mathis Center, which is an element of that grant. The rest of it has already been fulfilled with the purchase of the play area and the equipment that's associated. The only other grant that could be impacted was literacy. But literacy services are continuing out of the literacy center and also the Mathis Center throughout the construction. So again, those won't be impacted. All other grants are either closed at this point or are kind of led by the cooperatives. And so we receive benefits, but not, are, we're not directly responsible, and we won't be, there won't be anything negative if we can't fulfill it, but no impact in those. And there is a note at the end of what kind of, when we get to my director's report, what impacts the IMLS, the federal grants being cut off, what that impact is like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Reno. We can move on to the next item.
And that is the statistics report. So we have statistics for December, January, and February. Oh, my main note from this is that, one, total circulation looks like it's trending down from December, January, and February, but in March, we actually surpassed January's circulation, so we've gone back up. So I take that to be vacation-related, or maybe construction-related. Beyond that, I'll also mention that we were finally able to get accurate statistics for website visits. As some of you might recall, we were hovering around five thousand is what we were estimating, but in fact, it was more than double that in most cases. And we are the most popularly visited website for the city, which isn't uncommon. The next one is, I think, Police, but for very different reasons. I'll also mention that, moving forward, I didn't have it for this month, but we are adding more statistics that cover specifically the Pioneer Room and our literacy services. I'm currently working with our literacy coordinator, Sheila, to get the right metrics to capture the impact of literacy. And so that's why they're not on this month, but next month, we'll be able to see going back the last three months for literacy. But you can see here Pioneer Room, we're going to be looking at digital collection items added, of course, the visits, and onsite items accessed. So that includes when people ask for a reference item or look up a historic home or look in the archive. That's what the onsite stats are tracking. Whereas the digital collection is what people are looking at or downloading on the website, Content DM. And the Pioneer Room visits are self-explanatory. Any questions about the stats for this past three months?
No? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to your director's report.
And I'll very quickly skim over the strategic plan. We did not have a lot of updates for this, the resilience goal, mostly because we've continued to work with City Recycling to provide monthly or, not monthly, but occasional table. Currently, we had one to celebrate Earth Day and Garden Month in April. So if you stopped by the library, you would have seen the table from the city's recycling division there. We also are currently partnering with a lot of the county organizations for information about composting and recycling. Succulent swaps, of course, continue, and that was derived from this strategic goal to include more gardening and community programs of that type. Meditation classes will continue at the mall, as they've continued here on a monthly basis. That's the main update as far as the strategic plan. For the director's report, update on Hoopla, because I'm sure you're all very interested to know how Hoopla's going. March had some good results from Hoopla. It was the first time since we instituted the monthly budget cap that we did not hit the monthly budget cap. So that meant that that amount rolled over into the, in the next month, which was April. It wasn't a lot, it was sixty dollars, but it was better than the past. Most of the blocks are still only happening in the first week or two, from what I saw. There was no blocks after March nineteenth. And the start time for the blocks, the earliest is still happening between nine and ten, but that's only on the first couple of days. And then it switches to later in the evening, where I've seen it more in between like, between four and eight P M., depending on the day. So we are moving in the right direction, but we're not still, it's still not a pleasant experience for those that are wanting to use Hoopla, because they are still, we are still getting some blocks, and there are some days when, if you log in after work, say, around six or eight P M., you're going to get the message. So we are working to keep monitoring that, and then, now that we have some more data, already reaching out to Hoopla representatives to see what else they would recommend. Most likely, when we might try, I'll look at whether we can afford to, what would it take to bring up the download time to not be any time during the day, where you can download any day at any time, how much that would cost per day or per month, to see whether we can accommodate that in next year's collections budget. And then we'll also talk with Hoopla about what else they would recommend and whether or not they would suggest reducing the, the maximum download cost, which is currently at two ninety-nine. They had previously, as I mentioned, recommended dropping that to two eighty-four. So that could be a way of stretching and allowing for more downloads. Now that we have more data, I think it's trending in the right direction. It's definitely much better. And for example, during this last first week of April, there were only fifty blocks, whereas in the first week of March, there was like something like two hundred blocks. So we're doing a lot better as far as Hoopla's concerned. Any questions about Hoopla or any suggestions as far as what you would like us at the library to consider as we move forward in our discussions with the Hoopla reps?
I'm just curious if you have any opinion on, basically, blocks stopped after March nineteenth. Okay, it is, will this month's data show, give you an indication if that's just something that happens during the first two weeks of every month?
That is what we're looking at right now. Because like, as you mentioned, it's too hard to know necessarily right now whether this is just a pattern where we can train patrons to, you know, spread out their downloads or to not all try to download on the first week of that. It's also unclear currently what impact the Hoopla bonus borrows, which are usually the last week of the month, whether those are having a positive effect. Those are, if you don't recall, those are borrows that Hoopla allows that aren't tied to either the monthly limit for three downloads, and they're also not tied to the budget cap. So there might be some adjustments Hoopla is doing behind the scenes to offer materials during those bonus borrows that are better aligned to what our popular items are. But I haven't dug deeply into the data to be able to say that's what's happening. And they also don't have the best transparency as far as their bonus borrows are concerned. But that could also be a factor.
So your recommendation is just keep going with the, with the parameters we have now and let the data direct us?
Correct. I think we would need one more month to really give us an idea of a pattern. As of right now, it is trending in the way I want it to trend, which is more people are having access with less frustration as far as the time in particular when they download. And if they try downloading later in the month, the data is telling us that they'll have a much better chance, as long as not everybody does it at the same time. But right now, I would recommend we give it April, because it's not looking like it's getting worse, and it does seem to be addressing the issues we had identified, both the board and the library side of things. So a little bit more data, I think, would be helping us better inform your next actions, if any.
Reno, I'm curious, what has been the response from the online library cardholders? Have you had folks reaching out to prove their, that they live or work in Escondido, or has that just kind of gone silent?
Perfectly honest, I have not been made aware of anybody that's requested the card via mail, which was what I was expecting. There might have been more people that came in and got it physically in person, so I wouldn't know that necessarily. But I haven't had any emails or angry phone calls related to this change. So in most cases, that's a good thing. And so I think those people that weren't having that online card were either understanding of the rationale or they've gone in and gotten a card in person if they're able to.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that you're not hearing the wrath of the community.
It's funny, Marybel, because John and I are on another board together, and our board member on that board, her online card expired, and she's like, why do I have to go in? Like, you have to go in every once in a while, and now you need a new card.
Only other point, I alluded to earlier in our discussion, the LSTA, which is the Library Services Technology Act funding, that's a main grant source that's managed by the Institute for Library Services, which a lot of people didn't know about before current administration chose to try to shutter it down. Now that, of course, a lot of people know about it on the news. Currently, the, we have no direct impact as far as loss of LSTA funds. We were careful when we applied for the Play for All grant that we'd be just under the cutoff for splitting the payment. So we got all our payment at one time at the start, and so we've already spent it all, and so we're safe there. The only other service that would have been affected, but we've basically just paused, we were working to have New York Times access made available to the library patrons. That is no longer being supported, since that was an LSTA grant through the state. So we've just paused that, and we're just waiting to see where that goes. The rest of the funded items, which were managed by the state, were mostly related to library staff professional development and training resources, which, while our staff might feel the hit, honestly, L S N S, we provide a lot of that training ourselves anyways. And there's also a lot of training on YouTube from the exact same sources. So no major hit there either. Of course, there are people that are going to miss it. The main impact, of course, of the federal grants, which we've already mentioned, that we're still learning how it's going to play out, is for staff salaries at the state level, since a lot of the LSTA grants are managed by people that are also paid by LSTA funds. So we don't quite know the extent of that impact at the state library level or at the cooperative levels in some of the areas just yet, mostly because they're still figuring out what's happening and what's not happening. So I expect I might have an update about grants in the future for you, but not anything specific at this time. All right, and then, last but not least, highlights. For adult services, we again celebrated Noru's. We had a Have Seen table at the front of the library to celebrate our diverse cultures here in Escondido. We had slightly less adult programs, because we had originally planned on being closed earlier than anticipated. But those continue. Our book clubs are going to continue. Pioneer Room had some great Pioneer Room had some great celebrations. A very interesting update about them helping out using our microfilm scanner, which is a novel way of, one, using it, and, two, for a very unique kind of, you know, 1964 gemenological study-type thing. So you never know what some of the questions in the Pioneer Room might be, but it's a very diverse resource for historical purposes. Let me think, what else? Youth services, it was the first year we participated in the Maslenica celebration, it's the one language I don't speak. But, I know, I do not know Russian or Ukrainian. But they had a good turnout, we have featured some of those images there, 75 attendance. And yeah, we've got, oh, I also mentioned, I'm very excited about our Launchpad All Tablets that are now circulating in the children's space. If you have not seen them, these are little tablets that come preloaded with a variety of different learning games, videos, and apps. And those are used, those were paid for out of the Play for All grant, and another pass grant for the All Tablets, and support from our friends. And from what I hear staff tell me, that they're getting used every day now. And it's a nice way of engaging those that want to have that technology, because not everybody wants their kids using tablets, but it gives them the option, in parallel with the play elements we've installed, to give a little bit of both worlds, digital and, I guess, analog. And that's it for my report.
Quick question on, you know, a lot of these programs are funded by the Friends. And so what does that look like coming up with the move? And have they expressed that they have to pull back on funding of programs?
They have expressed that they would like to continue funding programs. I have directed staff to try to absorb as many of the costs to make it easier for the Friends, given the fact that they won't be able to fundraise as much potentially. At least initially, we didn't know whether they would have a storefront at the mall. Now that they do, they'll have a little bit more leeway. But since they don't quite know the number of donations they'll be receiving, whether there'll be a change, or whether the clients at the mall will be as receptive to buying the materials as they are in the shop, we're trying to give them more breathing room, so we're not asking or planning to ask for as much. We also are kind of hedging our bets as far as summer reading. We don't know how many active participants will be this year, or how many will want to get and pick up prizes at the mall location. So again, we're trying to shift some of those asks from the Friends over to library operations in preparation of some of the unknowns. But the Friends have been very open to continuing to support, I'm just kind of giving them a little breathing room.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I don't mean to go back to the previous thing, but I find this natural Ruby story really interesting. Was there press involved, or is there an opportunity there to promote the fact that this happened, or?
I believe...
Is it rare, or is it just...
I don't know, I think it was just old. Also, there's not very microfilm machines out in the wild, and so we, as libraries, are one of the few places where, if you happen to have a microfiche or microfilm reel or plate, you have to come to us, otherwise, you're going to have to pay a lot of money to have that shipped off and digitized. But you can come to the library, in this case, the Pioneer Room, and get a look at some of those items.
Yeah, no, it just seems like a very interesting story that more people should hear.
I wanted to touch on the Friends of the Library being able to, they primarily fundraised through the selling of books in their bookshop. Do you know, so they will still be having a storefront. Will they be accepting donations to sell that? Okay, so then, I think there may be a clarification that we may want to put on the website, because I was reviewing some of the marketing that was put out. And the way I read one of the FAQs was, will the library still accept donations during the move? And so it says, no, that all donations stop at April 25th. So it doesn't specify, it's like, if it's only during the transition period, or if it's for this full upcoming year. I understood it as like the full year. And so, right, if they run out of books, because I think they do sell quite a bit, I imagine they still want the incoming flow of books. So I would ask for that clarification.
Yes, and you're correct. That was intended to be just during that move month, the temporary, limited services out of Pioneer Room. We just don't want to be receiving more things to then have to move or coordinate with the move. But you're correct, we'll be able to have a donations process at the mall for the Friends.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Reno. Now we'll move on to the trustee library use report. And I just want to mention, this is not my report, but I want to mention that this is Carolyn's last meeting. She, it will be part of the May meeting, but she'll be absent for work. So Carolyn, thank you for your service on our board, and it's been a pleasure working with you all these years and your contributions to Escondido.
Let's see, so my report, I'll just give first since I'm talking already. I almost texted all of you that I actually got a book off of Hoopla. I know, I was so happy. So this month, or since our last board meeting, I was able to download a book that I wanted on Hoopla, and two from Libby. This is the first month that I've ever been able to get more than one book. So what we're doing is definitely working. And I will say, when I went to Libby to reserve my books, it said like a four-to-six-week waiting period, which I just went on the waitlist, but then both of them came within two weeks. So I had a really great experience with my online books, and they've been keeping me busy on my drives this month. So thank you for these changes, it's working.
Marybel, would you like to go?
That's awesome, and thank you so much, Carolyn, for your time on here. We're going to miss you. I took, it's been a minute, but I took my little one to the library, and he got to play around with all the new activities on the second floor. And he really loved it, that little loft structure, and the kitchen set was really nice. I especially appreciated all the different little activities, because before, I think they only had just a handful, and I think a lot of the kids would just fight over them. So there was more than plenty to go around, and I actually did see some of those tablets on there, which, and I think I saw, there is one that's in Spanish, so that's pretty exciting. So once he gets a little older, I think we will explore the Spanish tablet.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, the filter I use on Libby is available now. But I'm going to have to see if I can find something else where I can just get books that aren't that popular, because sometimes it takes me a couple of weeks to get through one. And then all of a sudden, I notice that I've got two days left, and there's somebody else waiting. And, yeah, so, got a whole list of books I've never finished.
Thank you, Carolyn, for all your service to Escondido. Much appreciated. Keep mine as brief as possible. I drive by the mall every day for work and am fascinated to see where this goes. Will definitely stop by the library on my route. And then, I guess another thing is, just a quick story, I talked to someone today who said they've never been to the library here. So my goal is to report in the future that they have visited.
So like Virginia said, it is my last meeting, and I think I'm leaving this in very, very good hands. So it has been a pleasure to work with all of you. Reno, it's been a real great pleasure to work with you as well and the city staff. I think we have a really bright future ahead of us for the library. With that said, right, I am super interested in still, you know, serving on any commissions that you guys, you know, establish. You know, we still need to build a new library in the future, so happy to help there as well. And then, you know, I think, too, it's just important to remark on, you know, during times of uncertainty, I think the community really leverages and depends on our community institutions, of which the library, we know, is huge in Escondido. So you guys have such a great charter, you guys do such a great job of speaking for our community in, you know, the largest institution that is used by our community. So keep up the great work, I'll see you around. Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot to add, Carolyn, it's, we've been on this six years together, and it's been fun.
Yeah, it has, sure has.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.